Mr. Roll call.
Mayor Truman.
Here.
Councilmember Colbert.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Bass.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Kerstetter. Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Stan.
Present. So Stan for the indication and collectively, please.
I always thank you for this day. We thankful that you steer the severe weather away from us. Lord, we lift up the communities who are impacted by the severe weather. Let's give them the support for their recovery ahead of them. But we're also thankful that your word says the government is upon your shoulders. Thankful that you lift up our city leaders, you support them, you give them wisdom, Lord. Lord, we is. Community always in favor for you. Thank you and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
The United States of America, the republic of its sustenance, a one nation, invisible, literate, just. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to add, amend the agenda and add an item under new business. Item B, discussion of Wagon Tail Ranch sign at the northwest corner of 69th and Meridian.
Second. I have a motion and second to amend the agenda to add item B. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Move for approval of the agenda as admitted.
Amen.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as admitted, amended. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to approval of the minutes for the last May 6 meeting.
Motion to approve minutes of the May 6, 2025 city council meeting as presented.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the council minutes of May 6, 2025. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. No presentations, no proclamations. Public forum, is there anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? And I have one, Mike. State your name and address, please.
Mike Miller, 701 Dover Drive, here in Valley Center. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Councilmember Bass, this one's directly for you. I just wanted to wish you all the best in whatever's next. We didn't always see eye to eye, but I've genuinely respected your commitment to serve in the community and the passion you've brought to this role. I hope the next chapter brings you good things, new opportunities, new perspectives, and a bit of well-deserved peace. No hard feelings on my end, just appreciation for the work that you've put in. I remember seeing a post on social media where you and a Valley Center resident were really debating an issue, and you offered to meet up over a beer to sort things out. We never had our own version of that, so consider this a rain check. Here's a six-pack on me to toast to clean slates and fresh starts. Wish you the best.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to appointments. We'll talk about that one later. Moving on to old business. Ordinance 1424-25, rezone Birch.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you is the second reading of the rezone of 328 Birch from R1B to R2. The applicant is wanting to rezone so that he can demolish the existing structure and build a duplex on that property. Just a brief, if you could pull them up. I know we've had, there's a lot of discussion at the last meeting about this. The applicant wanted me to share some pictures because there was concerns about the aesthetic look of the duplexes fitting into the neighborhood. He submitted pictures today of what he would like to build, so he wanted me to share those with you just to kind of show you ones that are, I don't know actually where these ones are at, but the look of what he's hoping to put into that neighborhood. I know that's not necessarily required for this meeting, but he asked that I share them, so I have them pulled up on the screen for you. This, again, is rezoning for a duplex. This matter tonight is, if it is approved, will allow him to build one duplex on that lot. I know, like I said, we've talked about this a lot. I don't know if you have any questions, but I would recommend approval of second reading.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance 1425-25 with rezones property located in 328 North Birch from R1B to R2.
I have a motion and a second, but I also have a comment from the public that needs to be addressed. Matthew Tucker? Okay. We have a motion and a second then. All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance number 1425-25, rezone property of the north of the Rec Center.
All right, this property is currently owned by the city. It is located northeast of the Rec Center in the Harvest Place Development. As mentioned last time, when this flat was completed, we zoned lots at the same time. All of the large lots were zoned C2 and all the residential lots were zoned R2. So that way they could be two-family or single-family lots. With this parcel, the staff have thought that this lot would be better as R3, kind of more of a transitional lot between the R2, single-family or two-family houses to the commercial. Could potentially, within the R3 zoning, could potentially house like a senior living facility as a special use. So we think this would just help us market this property to the community for future development. And then just as a reminder, this is city-owned, so if we do, if you do approve the R3 zone, you also will say yes or no to the future purchaser of the lot. So I will stand for any questions, but I recommend approval of second reading.
Parcel of land in northeast. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1425-25. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, 2024 financial audit report.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. We performed the 2024 audit of the city, so I'll go through the audit report that you saw in the document packet. We'll start with pages one through three. This is called the independent auditor's report. Here we discuss the opinion that we issued the city's financial statements. Further on down here, we talk about management's responsibilities for the city's financial statements and a few more of our responsibilities as the auditor. The most important paragraph here is page one, the third paragraph down. You'll see an italicized heading called "Unmodified Opinion on Regulatory Cases of Accounting." You'll see in this paragraph, it starts out, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statement referred to above presents fairly in all material respects." This is called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and cleanest opinion that we can issue per state and auditing standard guidelines that we follow. So that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management by city staff for the year ended 12/31/2024. Flipping forward, the next section is page four. It's called the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column all of the different funds of the city, followed by beginning cash, receipts, expenditures, and ending cash for each of those funds. And you'll see at the very bottom of that right-hand column, the city's reporting a little over $26.5 million on hand as a 12/31/2024. The next section forward is called the notes to the financial statements, and this runs from page five to page 12. Here we discuss a variety of things, including the different accounting policies that the city follows. There's also information on different long-term debt activity that occurred for the city during the year, budgeted transfers that were made, papers, retirement program information. Like I said, a lot of this information discussed here. For those of you that have been on the council and seen this before, this is, this section is mostly the same as what we've presented over the past few years. There were no major changes required by the state in this section, so just be aware of that. And then the, the last kind of section in the, in the audit report packet is pages 13 through 40. And these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that we saw previously on page four. And in these sections, we provide more detail on the different types of revenues and expenses that take place in each fund. And then if it was a budgeted fund, we also present a budget column, so you can see how the, each fund operated against the budget that was adopted for 2024 as well. We did not have any auditor's recommendations to communicate to the mayor and council, so again, that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management by city staff. And then the last thing I wanted to say was that we had a good audit this year. We appreciate Clint and everybody else involved in the audit process. They did a great job of answering our questions and giving us any information that we requested, so we do appreciate that. With that, any questions for me on the audit report or our audit process?
Any questions?
Motion to accept and file the 2024 financial audit report.
Second. Have a motion and a second to report the 2024 financial audit report. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the added item, Wagon Tail sign on 69th and Meridian.
All right, I added this item, so I wanted to discuss this with council tonight. A little background to this, the city council voted several years ago after we acquired the property at the northwest corner of 69th and Meridian to allow Wagon Tail Ranch to install a sign that directed their customers to their business west of that intersection. Sign was installed with the understanding that if the city ever needed it removed, that they would do so, that Wagon Tail would be contacted and they would remove it. Fast forward to our current Meridian project, and to my knowledge, no one at Wagon Tail was contacted to remove the sign. Pearson, Pearson Construction removed the sign and damaged, it snapped off a couple of posts and damaged the vinyl sign and a couple other things on it, I'm not sure. Stacy Miles from Wagon Tail can fill in the parts that I've left off here. Stacy got in contact with Brent, and Brent put her in contact with Zach, who was Pearson superintendent. His email response to her was that he would replace the posts and then reinstall the sign at the end of the project, but he did not feel like they were responsible for fixing the vinyl. My issue with this is, if we would have asked Wagon Tail to remove it, we wouldn't have had any liability of anything on this sign. It was on our property. We had given them permission to put it on our property. I think we need to have a discussion of, it's either our responsibility as a city or Pearson's responsibility to fix that sign. So that's what I'm bringing before you tonight. If there's any other questions that Ms. Miles can answer, I think she's prepared to come forward to answer any questions, but I wanted to bring it before the council to discuss this.
Ron. Could it be a shared field?
I'm not sure that question's directed towards, but.
I don't know what they're asking.
Well, I'm just bringing it up for this, to us, so that we can assume some liability in this, whether it's us or Pearson, that we need to work with Wagon Tail and make this right, in my opinion, because we didn't ever ask them to remove the sign, to my knowledge.
Right, it's a request, I'm sorry.
That we take care of whatever's damaged on the sign, within reason, and I don't have a dollar figure tonight, but because this project is going to come to an end, and they're going to need to reinstall this sign, I wanted to bring this to the council so that we can discuss it and come to some agreement of what, what, and maybe not, that's not tonight, maybe that's the next meeting, but I want to discuss this of what we can do to make this right.
Yep, and so Pearson was in communication, I believe, with Pop Prints to discuss, you know, the sign of what was damaged. I know that we're going to put in two new posts, and then there was a little bit damage, maybe to the roof or something. The vinyl itself, you know, with the cracking and the sun faded, those things, I don't think that, that that was something that Pearson, if I recall, was going to cover with any vinyl refacing of the sign, but the posts are going to be replaced. And PEC could attest this as well, because we've discussed this in our, in our bi-week meetings. So Pearson will replace the posts and then that roof, whatever damage was incurred there.
Right.
Is that what you're discussing?
It is, but my, my whole point of this is, if we would have asked them to remove the sign, I believe there was damage done to the vinyl itself. How old it was is irregardless to the point. We didn't ask them to remove the sign. We need to step up to the plate and fix what was damaged by Pearson. And, and if we would have asked them to remove the sign, anything that was damaged would be on them, because they would have removed the sign, whether it's weather faded or whatever. We, we assumed that liability when we took the thing out without asking them. That's, that's my point tonight. So we need to get a dollar figure from Wagon Tail on what it's going to take to fix that, and, and I got a copy of the email sent to me, and I believe you were CC'd on it, Brent, that they said they would only replace the posts. They did not feel, so that's what I'm bringing to us. That would be fine, except we damaged more than just the posts. We being Pearson. So that's the whole point I'm bringing to this, this council tonight, because it's not my decision to make, it's the council's decision to make.
Robert.
Yeah, I feel, I, I'm completely with Councilman Anderson on this, this needs to be taken care of. I feel bad as a leadership group that this even has to be brought to us. If this was damaged by Pearson, this needs to be fixed. This should not even be put in front of us like this. We are stewards of all the businesses, whether they're within the city limits or even outside the city limits. I know Wagon Tail does a lot for the city, even though they're not in the city limits. This needs to be rectified. This is showing a very unsightly sight on our leadership here and Pearson of not having this corrected. And I can't believe with the amount of money that's being spent on this project by Pearson, that this is not being taken care of.
So I guess tonight, my proposal would be to direct Ms. Miles to get us a dollar figure on what it is going to take to, to fix the sign. I don't know that there's anything we can do tonight other than vote to, I don't, I don't want to put us on the hook to replace something when we don't have a cost for it, but I wanted to bring it before this, the council to get it addressed. That was all I had.
Clint? Hey, was there, so there, there was damage to the actual vinyl part, or we, we don't know that, we just know the posts?
I, I was sent pictures, but I did not have them printed. We can get that, we can get that to the council. But regardless of what, you know, we kind of, we kind of went past the argument of who damaged it or if it was weather damage, because we did not allow them to remove their sign or didn't contact them to get it removed. So I, I think that's where the failure comes in. If it would have been a fiber optic line, you know, anything that's in our easements, we contact them to, to move them if there's construction, and we should have done the same thing in this case.
Can we get together with Pearson and Stacy, come up with the option for the next meeting? Do you want me to do it? I can do it too.
But it sounds like they're already fixing it, right? I guess I'm.
They're replacing the posts is all they said they would do.
Problem is with the vinyl.
Right.
How long's that sign been there?
I, I tried to look it up, but I don't know, but to me, we kind of.
Why did Pearson take that sign out without our approval? Or did they just jump the gun? Is that what happened? Sounds like Pearson screwed this up, and we should, we should have maybe had a little better oversight, but it sounds like Pearson's the one who really kind of jumped the gun on this, so. That's just my two cents.
It would have been in the plans to remove and reset, and yes, they should have contacted someone. I am not sure if they contacted anyone with the city or Wagon Tail themselves, but since work was being done on the city lot, the intent was to stage at the city lot, so that would have been a part of that staging.
This is going to be an unpopular opinion, but that intersection is being redone. I would, I would think that that sign, it was given that it was going to be, needed to be removed at least temporarily. Rarely, number one. Number two, I think Pearson needs to be in here, and they need to answer some questions. That's my two cents. We obviously have some culpability, I get that, but I feel like the blame is more, is being moved on to us when to me, like, I, this is the first I'm hearing about it, and just hearing the little pieces here, Pearson. Like, what, you know what I mean? Like, so I would let, I'm not on the council after tonight, but I'd like, if I was, I'd want Pearson in here to talk to those guys. And so, you know, the email chain was Pearson, you rejected the vinyl proposal, and then there was no request to the city.
Yep. I would like to see us get this wrapped up and not dragged out any longer. I move that city staff and Pearson meet with Ms. Miles and bring back a proposal next meeting for cost of repairs.
Second. Have a motion and a second, advising staff to meet.
Could we have Stacy come up? She wants to.
Okay.
This is Miles, Wagon Tail Ranch. Ben, I, did you not get the one text that had the amount of the vinyl?
Yes, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was.
Oh, okay, because I, I do, I do have the.
Is that all you're requesting then? Is that additional?
I've got the rest of, like, the roof material. I don't have extra four-by-four posts that are.
And they said they were going to replace the posts.
They were going to do the posts, but that roofing material is special order. I've already, it's in my barn, I have extra, and so I wasn't worried about that, it was just the vinyl. And you, you know, if you have the pictures, it shows that there's scratches on it. They weren't gentle about it, they just blew it down. And I, there's also a, on the sign, there's a kind of a egg-shaped circle on it. That is bent, and that's the only part of it that we're actually going to reuse. But I can, we can straighten that out, but the rest of it is pretty well scratched up. So that, that's the only number that I'm going to come up with that they, actually, I would like to put the sign up myself. I'd like to redo it and do the whole thing myself.
Stacy sent me a quote from a sign company to replace both sides that was double-sided, four-by-eight vinyl that was total of $1,898.75. I, I still would like to see the city and Pearson meet to decide who's going to pay for whatever amount, now that we have an amount, and I apologize for not having more of this printed out. But I will go back to what I said earlier, if, if we would have asked them to remove it, we wouldn't be going through any of this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Matt.
I think someone's responsible. We could sit here all night and argue who it is, but when I voted against this when originally come on there, because I knew something would show up. You don't allow personal signs and stuff on city property, so that's all I got to say.
I think at the end of the day, it needs to be taken care of, whether that's by us, but in my whole hearted opinion, Pearson pulled that sign out, threw it on the ground allegedly. I think there needs to be a discussion with them, and then we can rectify it with Wagon Tail and move on. That's my, my two cents before we move on.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Ron.
Yeah. Seth, continue talking, not just calling for the vote.
Well, the vote was to, to have them meet and decide who was going to pay for it.
To discuss, yeah, and bring it back to the council.
Correct.
Clint. Ron, get any more? Okay, I have a motion and a second to direct staff to get with Pearson's and Stacy Miles to decide, to decide on the sign, replacement, repair, whatever. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, moving on to approval of supplemental agreement for Meridian Inspection Services, PEC.
Good evening, mayor and council. Kristy Scaz and PEC here to present a request for a supplemental for some additional inspection for the Meridian project. Throughout the course of the project, there's been some additional inspection performed by PEC staff due to some issues with the lighting system on the main to fifth portion of the project. This is a direct result of that. City has been in contact with KDOT to discuss liquidated damages for the additional inspection and issues that have come due to construction. And this is PEC's portion of that additional work. This is an hourly contract, so it's not a lump sum. The total fee would be based on the additional hours at the end of the project. Are there any questions?
Any questions, comments? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve supplemental inspection services for Meridian project in the amount not to exceed $47,120 authorized mayor or city administrator to sign.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the supplemental agreement for the Meridian Inspection Services. Any further questions? All in favor of the motion? Gina?
Since Dale's not here.
Since Dale's not here, where is this money coming from?
So it's becoming out of LDs that we have on the project for more than covering.
Real quick, Mayor. Ms. Gags, can you state the, the, the intersections again? Both intersections? You, you said, I thought you said main and fifth.
The new lights, um, the pedestrian and streetlights from main to fifth.
The new pedestrian lights, okay?
I say new, the ones that were installed last fall.
Okay.
Yep. So since then, there have been discussions with KDOT on liquidated damages and how much contractor is responsible for. That includes some parts that were not properly placed as well as some additional inspection that PEC had to perform.
Additional inspection on something that was already there was removed and then put back?
Additional inspection, the original poles for the project, we were misordered. So they got them halfway up, pulled them down. That's additional time. With that additional time, there was some additional work as far as wiring and just things. Once you let things sit for so long, you have to go out and relook at it.
I have a really hard time with this number. Really hard time. Because I, I understand that the parts are probably not, well, you ordered the parts. We didn't order the parts. So the parts were incorrect. That is a either your problem or a manufacturer's problem, correct?
It was a manufacturer issue, yes.
Okay, so then we are paying for a manufacturer's issue for reinspection because of delays.
The city will get a credit for the liquid, we call them liquidated damages, the damages caused by this contract. And this would be covered within those additional, that additional money the city would receive from KDOT.
Are you tracking this?
Yeah.
Okay, because I want to make sure that we get our money back because this is ridiculous. This is a ridiculous price.
And so if you recall, so the Meridian projects, we got WAMPA money for the Meridian projects. Uh, part of the county's contribution is their handling with all the inspection services. So we have not had to enter into with everything KDOT related projects. Things outside of the KDOT project was water line, uh, and then electrical. And so this is in addition to what the county has already expended. I didn't feel that it was appropriate to ask Central County to cover that additional costs. Those additional costs are going to be covered with liquidated damages that we are charging Pearson. Pearson is then passing that down to their subcontractor, which is PSE, who installed the lights. And then they are then responsible to then go to the manufacturer and then get that money back from the manufacturer because the poles were ordered incorrectly and because of all the modifications. So it has to do with all the inspection services when it comes to making sure that the taxpayers get the correct lights, the right pole bases, um, the flag poles, the banner poles. I mean, it was just a disaster of what we had actually ordered for the manufacturer and what we received. Now, I agree with you that we should have been a little bit more proactive. And we've had those discussions that when those were ordered and shipped to the yard for PSE and it was sitting there for months, why didn't somebody expect it to make sure that we received the correct lights? A hundred percent. And so those fees and additional, is what we're going to cover. Liquidated damages are going to roughly be eighty, sixty, sixty or sixty or seventy thousand. And then so this is a dollar amount not to exceed the forty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty for additional services. So the city is still getting some dollars off. You can't get that in form of cash because it's a KDOT project. And so that has to go off of the total for the KDOT project.
So this is not just the crossing lights? This is also the?
These are all.
All the lights, streetlights, okay.
All the brand new black streetlights from, from main to fifth on both sides of the road. And so those were misordered.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
And it has to go with the bank that controls them and there's a patrol panel.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, sorry for any confusion.
So just one more clarification on him, on what Robert was asking. We pay for this upfront and it comes off of the back end of the contract. Since it was all one contract, is that correct?
Yes, for KDOT, yes.
The project that's not completed yet.
Correct.
But it will come off liquidated damages from that. But we're paying for it upfront and it will be taken off.
It'll be taken off of what? Yeah, this total.
I just, thank you.
Because there's two phases of Meridians if you're.
Right, exactly, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gags, appreciate it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the supplemental agreement for inspections. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to ordinance fourteen twenty-six dash twenty-five Ridgefield Speed Limit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I am here on the recommendation of reducing the speed limit in the Ridgefield area to twenty miles per hour for ordinance number fourteen twenty-six dash twenty-five. And that's read on page seventy-seven.
Any questions? I have a comment from the public. Any questions right this minute? Nicole? Hit your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I live at Sixer High North Red Bud Avenue. I don't, I don't know who else is familiar with the Ridgefield development. Yeah, um, and the park there, right? So I actually was fortunate enough to actually know about this area. Um, and Ridgefield is actually a really beautiful development and we were absolutely sold because of that park. I've got three curls, little curls. Now, here's the thing about the Ridgefield development. It is, that development is a thirty mile an hour speed limit. Go right across your left still, I'm trying to get there a little bit. Curves and then curves around the park. Now, when it snows, people fly down and I've seen them spin out. We've got videos, laughed at them. They, they landed in other people's yards, they landed in the park. My daughter, a couple of weeks ago, I called you. My daughter, who is religious about looking both ways, was on her way to school one morning and she pulled out on her scooter to the edge of the driveway and she looked both ways. And she let a truck pass and then she went to go across the street. I could see the car flying around the corner and almost hit her. And I got a call from my husband later that day, hey, did you know that Flor almost got hit on her way to school? And I said, what? And I went and I watched that video of my daughter almost getting hit by a car after watching a car, watching her let somebody pass. And I did not get much work done the rest of the day. I got too busy calling everybody I could because this is insanity. Thirty miles an hour is not okay in that development, especially with the, the curves and people don't look and people text and drive. And like I said, I've got three kids and they've almost been hit. I have, my neighbor has a child next to them, has two kids and they just got a basketball court installed. What's going to happen when that ball rolls across the street, across the street from them? They've got a brand new baby. Next to them, there's two kids, three kids, two kids. My daughter now has new friends and they are in my house, out of my house, over there, over there. This, it's got to be lowered. Something's got to be done, this is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Matt?
I'll support this, but I was wondering if there was a traffic study done to see if what they, what the eighty-fifth percentile come out at?
I'm not aware of any traffic study, maybe Brad is.
Um, there wasn't an official one done, but we set out the, uh, the traffic counters that had the speed on those a few years ago when we had reviewed potential speed limit reduction as well as speed humps. The speed humps, because of where the driveways are, uh, you're just weren't feasible all the time. You know, with those two kind of bundled together, I think we lost sight over the speed limit issue. Um, and so, you know, after I received a phone call, you know, from another concerned parent, I mean, you know, we've gone through two HOA presidents that have requested a speed limit reduced. I can't even count the number of times that I have been requested, uh, as a city from residents over there to reduce the speed limit. So, you know, we thought it was about time to put this in front of council again, uh, in ordinance focusing on just reducing the speed limit uh, to twenty miles an hour in Ridgefield subdivision. There's only one main entrance. The other secondary entrance is off of Kessler, which is a gravel road. And so, uh, the main entrance off of Fifth Street there is a, a great, you know, advocate and avenue, an area for a twenty mile an hour speed limit. We did a similar thing in Prairie Lakes. Prairie Lakes has been very successful with a lowering the speed. I haven't heard any complaints since we've done that a few years back. I guess it's been more than a few years now, but, um, so that's why staff wanted to bring this for you again to have a discussion and hopefully get an ordinance passed to reduce the speed limit to twenty miles an hour. So the last speed study done, I mean, it's a few years ago. So, I mean, that information, you know, that, that data would really be outdated because we have added additional homes, uh, in that subdivision. I think there's only three, two or three lots left to build out, um, three, thank you, uh, that are ready to be built up. So, uh, when that study was done, I don't know. I think there was four or five less homes, so it's only increased in traffic. It's.
If I may for just a second, just on, from my perspective as a police officer patrol in the area. I was there when there was nothing there, okay? Then I've been there since there was a house there, two houses, three houses. Now we have a park, now we have a, a complete neighborhood. There are turns in there. People are driving distracted, okay? We have had incidents where a child has been hit. I want to say we just recently had an accident, although speed did not play a part in that particular accident. Driver error crossing the center line caused the accident. I still think with the school being right there, one entrance off of Fifth Street to go in, one exit off of Kessler, dirt road. It is my recommendation, the chief police recommendation, the rest of the staff, the city administrator, it's our recommendation that we reduce that for safety reasons.
I move to approve ordinance one four two six dash two five, which establishes a maximum speed limit of twenty miles an hour within the Ridgefield development for first reading.
Second? Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance sixteen, or fourteen twenty-six days twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the approval of the budget calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you is the twenty twenty-six Value Center Budget Process Calendar. A few of these dates are kind of current and the most important ones actually begin two weeks from now with the Department Budget Presentations. That will be before council, six P M. Two weeks after that will be the full budget presentation and discussion on June seventeenth. Between those two dates, I will actually get the actual revenue control rate from Central County and then additional things listed on there for potential additional meetings if they're needed. C I P discussion, notice, notice to Central County that we're going to exceed the revenue control rate applicable. And it's cut off a little bit here, but really September, the adoption of. So happy answering questions you have. This is very similar, almost word for word from last year's calendar, just the days.
Matt?
Uh, since we're talking budget, I'd kind of like staff to look to see if maybe we can lower the mill levy. Whether a half mill, a mill, something. Last year was pretty minimal what was going to be cut. I'd like you guys to kind of take a look and see if that's possible for our citizens.
Thank you for your suggestion. Definitely try to work on that. That will be dealt with the full presentation on June seventeenth. That's certain something. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to adopt the proposed twenty twenty-six budget calendar.
Second? Have a motion and a second to adopt the budget calendar for twenty twenty-six, or twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-six. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to approval of the RFP Custodial Services.
Evening, Mayor and members of council. In your packet, you'll find a request for proposal for custodial services that we're asking for permission to put out for bid this evening. Currently under a contract with Janikin and that contract is slated to end in July, early July. And we would like to go ahead and put this back out for bid to bid services for all the city facilities. For custodial services. It's a little bit more encompassing than what we have been doing to include services that we. Let me back up just a minute and say, a couple of years ago, we did a lot of things. We did, uh, we started taking custodial services in-house. And prior to that, we had everything rolled under one package for carpet cleaning and things like that, as well as our custodial services for all of our city facilities. We're, we're looking at going back to that. We're treating this a little bit like we did with the bowling contract, if you will, but we're looking at everything and seeing what we can fit into our budget. One of the steps that we're also taking to help reduce some costs and save and see if this makes sense is to keep one of our staff positions in our department vacant to potentially offset some of that cost. So, uh, again, what we're looking at tonight is, uh, you know, request for a proposal that we'd like to approve and put out for bid. And then, uh, you know, evaluate from there and see where we go with the results. Stand for any questions, might I?
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the RFP and authorize the solicitation of bids for custodial services. Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the RFP for custodial ser- services. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to U S D two six two updated easements.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Clay, if you could scroll down to the map, please. Yes. Go up one more, that one right there. So, um, as I believe you all are aware, the, uh, school district is under a big bond project right now. Part of that includes a new building, um, on the high school campus. Currently, the, uh, there's a private easement that we have a water line through that serves that campus uh, in place where they want to locate that building. So this is to vacate the current easement, which is the, um, dash line that's going under the proposed building. And then establishing a new easement, which is the crosshatched, um, one that kind of is a U shape. So that there will be a new water line placed in that new easement to serve that site. This is all part of their project. The, the easement is a city easement on their property because it is a city water main. It is not a, their private water service. So their, um, their server, Baughman, has prepared this on behalf of the school to vacate and establish a new easement and staff recommend approval.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve vacation, establish a new utility easement for the water main of high school on U S D two sixty-two property.
Second? Have a motion and a second to approve the U S D two six two updated easements. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to a change order, Harvest Place, R C P extension.
Evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Samantha Greve and I have. From view, you see our cover letter for a change order for this construction, for this place. There are several items included in this. Our cover letter differs from the change order that they have just below this. There were two items that weren't included on there. I know that it's a little confusing, but their documents. but their document says change order number six, and that's just their internal numbering system, back and forth. So, there are four items that I wanted to discuss with you. The first one is an additional cart path crossing requested by the developer. That added $3,744 cents. But it's the northern pole next to our, which is putting a very low curve in the center there, so that's why that was added. The next item is the 36 inch RCP extension, so that was requested by the developer and along with the additional access to 93rd in the commercial area of Harvest Place, northwest corner. So, we had to extend that out because it would be, it would be in the way. That's a deduction, by the way, of 66,000. And then, the next item is the pond sea outlet changes. Those were driven by design changes in phase two to avoid crossings with other utilities, so we were actually able to shorten the pipe. And then, the last item that I have is an upgrade from 12 inch to 18 inch CMP for the cart path crossings. 18 inch pipe was preferred for proper drainage here for cart crossings and the unit price was very small.
Matt?
Again, this is still on here, this is just after the specials of the problem.
Any other questions? Gina?
So, the factual amount should be 38,196.50. Is that correct? That is correct, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Do you get a motion to approve?
Move to approve change order number six for Harvest Place in an amount not to exceed...
Number eight.
Gina, what was that number?
38,196.50.
Wait, what?
Five.
38,196.50 and authorized mayor, city administrator to sign.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve the change order for Harvest Place. Any further discussion? All in favor, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. They're going to skip item H. We have resignation of Mr. Clint Bass tonight from the council. I have his letter here. Should we read it? Well, that one's short and sweet. It's in the packet, so we don't have to read it, okay? So, I've got to ask this council, I don't know what happens if we don't approve it, to approve this resignation? Do you get a motion?
Motion to accept resignation of Clint Bass as Ward Three City Councilman.
Second?
I have a motion.
Ward four. I'm sorry, Ward four? I'm sorry. What did I say, three, four? Four, wow. Read it, but said it. Four.
I have a motion, a second to approve the resignation of Councilman Clint Bass. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now, moving on to appointment. This appointment was my job. We had three applicants, three excellent applicants. I interviewed all three of them. All three of them have filed with the county to run for your seat anyway, so the next election is going to be an interesting one. I, out of the three, I appointed Amy Reed to fill his spot till November, or well, till the end of the election, I guess. Yeah, it's a temporary appointment.
I move to approve the appointment of replacement for Ward Four Councilmember representative.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve Amy Reed's appointment. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Good to meet you, Clint, but good luck on your endeavors.
Thank you. Wasn't what we intended, just kind of happened, but it also was an opportunity that opened up for me to pursue a longtime dream of being in business for myself. Everyone up here brings a unique perspective to the council. Everyone up here has Valley Centers, best interests in hearts. We're not perfect in their heart, we're not perfect. I don't think anyone, whether it's city council mayor or city staff, would think otherwise. But just, all I can say is drown out the noise. Sometimes noise is good, sometimes we mess up, sometimes it's unwarranted, just drown it out and keep plugging away. And it's the same thing to everyone sitting up here and the city staff underneath you. We have a great city staff, we have great employees that are doing various jobs for this town, and I, I don't think they get enough credit. I've been out at three in the morning and they're plowing snow, working hard on planting trees, I mean, they're hard workers, and so I just wanted to highlight them, so, thank you. And before we end up, I want to... I'm under the weather, so, shout out to anyone sick.
I appreciate you for Clint Bass. Thank you for your service and dedication, Sheriff. January 34th, 2020. Thank you so much.
Come on, you guys, you gotta like, send a little...
Oh, gotta go down here.
When I joined the city council, I was wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly against the rec center, and I just want you to, I want to tell you that I am willing to admit I was wrong, and that it's great for this community. I was in there working out one day, and several older people, 60s, 70s, and 80s were coming in there to do water aerobics in there, they worked out hard, they all left with smiles, they had exercise, fellowship with other people, so much that I joined them the next Friday, and it was a great time. So, that, that rec center is doing more for this community, not just with physical activity, but with just community bonding. So, it was, so I admit I was wrong on that one, so, anyway, I just want to say.
Consciousness is clear there, Brad.
Go to sleep good tonight. Okay. Dave?
Right. Moving on, ask for an executive session.
I move for council to recess an executive session for consultation with attorney dean privilege session to include council members, mayor, city attorney, and city administrator. The open meeting will resume, the council chambers in five minutes.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Call a meeting back to order?
Council met executive session, no official action was taken.
Thank you. Moving on to the consider agenda.
Motion to approve consider agenda as presented.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve the consider agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to staff reports. Kyle?
Two quick things. At your seats is the final printed copy of the comprehensive plan, it's up on the website, the maps are up on the website, maps are also here in the council room, so just wanted to let you know that that is all finally done and printed. The other item, found out after the last council meeting, we've been waiting for the results, but we did get our results of our community rating system back, and we made qualification to get a 15% discount for those that get flood insurance again, so it's good news to get. Stand for any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Neil?
Good evening again. Just a couple of things to bring you to speed on. The pool opens Monday, Memorial Day. It's a little different this year, the rec is doing it, opening it on Monday because school kids, kids got out of school so late, so close to that timeframe this year on Thursday, so time to get things prepped and ready, they needed a few extra days, so instead of doing it like on Saturday, like they normally do, Monday for Memorial. Weather's not necessarily going to be in there in favor for everybody, but I don't think the kids will mind. It's, it's pretty chilly in there, so, hopefully that sun stays on it and keeps warming it up, but also splash pads will be open before the weekend, working through a few things there to get them finished up and ready, and we have had an update from our vendor on the 69 Meridian water sign. Brent and I actually got an invite to come take a look at the progress, they said they're, sounds like they're really proud of what's going on right now, and their team is being challenged by the type of sign that they're having to put together this time, and some of the intricacies that are a little different than probably the norm, so, it sounds like we're making good progress on that front, so, stand for any questions.
Good evening again. The only thing public safety has to report is we have a graduating officer, Bailey Rainwater will be graduating basic training at Hudge at KU T C, Kansas Law First训习Center this Friday at 11 o'clock, so she'll be joining our force out on the street, probably at Paul. Officers?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot of updates on the Meridian project, except for they're moving right along down there on the roundabout. If you haven't had a chance to get down there to see, they are making progress, it's looking like a roundabout more and more every day. I'm very, very honored to say, last week, Matt Nicholson in the Water Department successfully passed his level four wastewater test, that he is now dual certified at level four. This is not a small feat. That's very, very difficult. That puts the city at the proper level of certification for both water and wastewater for even when the plant is built. We have, I'm happy to say, we have a lot of enthusiasm in the Public Works Department from individuals wanting to get certified. This is not an easy thing. They go take the test, you'll see them all standing around talking about what'd you get, what'd you get, what'd you get, what'd you get, you know, what did, what do you think that question meant? What do you think that question meant? And there's even study groups being started up, so it's very, very nice to see that, and they're not giving up on themselves, so, really, really happy about that.
Rodney? Real quick, do we know when...
Rodney, real quick, do we know when, have we heard from Pearson when they're going to open Meridian 269, when the barricades will come off the road and they'll go back to four lane, or is that?
Basically on the schedule, they're hoping that, on the schedule states by the end of June.
Okay. I drove down there and they've, they've got a lot of it done, and I know they'll have to stripe and everything.
I'm sure that the, the, the target is to beat that, but that's what the schedule says.
Looking good.
Yeah, on that area, so they're crack ceiling, all the saw, saw joints still, and then they got to stripe that area, and then they'll open up the four lane to Ford Street, and then they'll open up the four lanes all the way to Ness, just past Ness, as they proceed down forward because of the sidewalk as well. But the reason why it's not done up here by Billers First Horse is because of all the crack ceiling.
Okay, so they'll do that in phases then?
Joint ceiling, yeah.
Thank you. Do you see Barry? Clint? You see?
Just a reminder, we are, and I know he's not wanting to shake hands, but we do have us, you know, some cupcakes and lemonade and water for Councilmember Bass in recognition of his service to us. We really appreciated him, it's been good to work with him.
Shake your hand at your own risk.
Oh, the only thing I have is this, what, not this Sunday, but the following Sunday is Councilmember Ron Colbert's birthday on June 1st, so happy early, come on now, we don't have council meeting until that Tuesday, so I have to tell you happy birthday now. You know I have to be the first, so happy early birthday, Councilman, I hope you have a fantastic day.
Anything else? And moving on, governing body reports, just a couple. Remind people that the deadline for filing for one of these luxurious council seats is June the 2nd, down at the county courthouse, or you can do it online, I guess, now.
I was just gonna say. Do it.
Have to do it in person, okay. But the deadline is June the 2nd, so just a reminder of that. I talked to Brent about the farmer's market, having a meet your council night, whether we can get the next, next farmer's market or not, but I think, you know, this council ought to be visible at least once during these farmer's markets, so. And a lot of us are, but if we could just mingle in one place, so one bomb would take us out, that would... I'm just kidding. We have a lot of fun, that, that farmer's market is picking up. It was crowded last week, the last, this last one Thursday, and they're doing a good job, my compliments mainstream. And I don't, don't think I have anything else except, good luck to Mr. Bass on his new adventure.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Rod?
I have nothing.
Robert?
Yeah, Mayor, just thought I'd piggyback on you, I was there at the farmer's market this last Thursday, got to see some very talented young, up and coming piano players, so that was awesome to see that. Great vendors there as well, so it was good to see a good variety of different vendors, so definitely want to encourage the citizens to come out and enjoy that, that time, especially while the weather is still so mild before it gets brutally hot, so definitely come out and do it. And Clint, it's been a pleasure, it's been a pleasure, I really have appreciated your time and your commitment to this community, and I wish you the well, the best of everything going forward.
Clint, one last time.
Ooh, I'm usually an emotional person, so I'm not going to say too much, but just kind of say what I said earlier, admit every word. I, I think everyone at some point should serve on some kind of board or city council. I definitely have a different perspective today than January 4, 2022, I have plans to come in here, you know, shake things up, and, and, you know, this is a, this is a city council, and, you know, we're just trying to make this community better, right or wrong sometimes, so people keep that perspective, that's all I got.
Yeah?
Just wanted to say thank you, Clint. I know one of the big things that you were passionate about when you got on was golf carts, so thanks for you getting that pushed through, and now you leave town and you don't, can't drive around town. So we'll find you a cart whenever you come back to visit, okay?
Taking my cart to the lake, but when I come back, I'll bring it back with you.
All right.
There you go. Still has the Valley Center tag on it, I'm going to keep it on there.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Gina?
Just wanted to report, May 10th, Jett and I attended the Cedric County Association of Cities meeting in Park City, where we heard about their plans for development, their new swimming pool, they're putting in a pool, woo-hoo. Also, from Commissioner Howell, I received a budget simulator QR code, if anybody wants to tell Cedric County what they should do with their budget, this is your opportunity. It's good until Friday, so I will leave that here for you. Had a local emergency planning committee meeting at Phillips 66 over on 37th Street, and I learned something totally new, you may know this, that the big white silos that gasoline is stored in, if it has a black top, it's ethanol, because that's mold. The ethanol is plant-based, and it molds the outside of the tank. I thought that was interesting. Anyway, also, as far as the emergency preparedness committee, we are hosting an expo on September 20th at Century 2 from 10 to 2, and Evergy will do their electrical demonstration at 11, which is really worth seeing. And we'll have prizes and giveaways too, so put that on your calendar. Thank you. Bye, Clint, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Matt?
I want to echo what everyone else, it's been fun working with you, Clint, and I appreciate what you just said about wanting to get on here and shake things up. People don't realize one person can't change, it's, it's eight people up here voting, and it gives people a different perspective of how stuff really works, so I appreciate you saying that. Good luck on your endeavors.
Thank you.
With that, I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, six for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried.